We're just waiting for the clock to tick. Make sure everybody gets here.
You know what I mean?
Going by that clock? That's okay. All right. I want to call this meeting of the Village, uh, Middleville Zoning Board of Appeals to order. We'll start with having a roll call of the members.
Eldon Newmeyer.
Here.
Steve Baldry.
Here.
Jason Holzhousen.
Here.
Judy Cruz.
Here.
Kathy Williamson.
Here.
All right. All present. Now, we need approval of the agenda.
I move we approve our agenda as printed.
So, second.
Kathy is second on motion that we approve the agenda as written. Are there any additions or subtractions that need to be made? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of the agenda. All those in favor of approving the agenda for tonight signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. All right. We can move on. We need the approval of the minutes of September 28th, last meeting.
I move we approve our minutes from September 28th, 2023 as printed.
Okay.
Support.
All right. Steve is second then. All right. Any questions? Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, we will go ahead and, um, vote on the motion on the floor, which is to approve the minutes of September 28th, 23rd. If you're in favor of this, signify at this time by saying aye.
Aye.
And if you're opposed, say nay. All right. I stand it. We have a scheduled public hearing tonight. And this is a variance 2024 dash oh one, uh, division 15. I'm not sure what that's about. And this is in 611 Grand Rapids Street. This is a use variance to allow for dog grooming facility. So we will recess our regular meeting. We will open the public meeting and, uh, in a moment, we'll have the, um, applicant, uh, tell us about it. We'll have a staff report and then we'll have public comments. So if we can do it in that order, uh, that would be appreciated. So, um, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And Keegan Schofield, can you stand up at the podium and tell us about your, uh, request?
I have a dog room business in Hastings currently. Um, almost five years now been in business. Super, super busy, super great, um, but just looking to relocate to Middleville.
Okay. All right. Good. And whereabouts do you want to locate and what do you want to do with it?
It's in that old community west building, right next to the snack shack. And would just like to move in there and we groom dogs. We have about 10, 12 dogs a day. They come in, they stay an hour or two. We purr them up and they go home and, um, we're open roughly nine to five during the week. Short day Saturday, close for the weekend. Sorry. Is there?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Powers, our staff report, if you will.
Thank you, board members. So this is a variance number two zero two four dash zero one, uh, dated for today being April 18th, 2024. Um, the back, the property is zoned transitional mixed use. And this is parcel, subject parcel is zero eight dash four one dash zero two three dash zero two one dash zero zero. The background, six 11 Grand Rapids was a single family dwelling unit, uh, built in 1958. Five one five and six 11 Grand Rapids were requested to be rezoned in 2003 to C one slash P U D, uh, to allow for a new restaurant and convenience store. Permits were pulled for an addition in December 2024. In 2007, the three parcels described in the survey, which is seen in exhibit L, were combined through the assessment roll. In 2014, ordinance two zero seven five was adopted. Ordinance two zero seven five created split zoning for the property, with a portion of the land fronting Grand Rapids, uh, were zoned C one and the half away from Grand Rapids were zoned, uh, R one creating split zone parcels, which you can see on the lower figures there, uh, that the orange, uh, boundary is around, uh, six 11, where you can see it has the, uh, part of it is C one and the other part is R one. So to rectify this, the property was rezoned to align with the future land use plan in 2023 to transitional mixed use. On March 6th of 2024, applicant petitioned to use the property for dog grooming and it was determined this would require a use variance. A completed application was received on March 14th of 2024. So the review process, a variance requires a public hearing as seen in exhibit M. After the hearing per section seven eight dash seven eight nine, the zoning board of appeals must require review the request based on several standards for approval. Below are the standards with comments for use variance request to receive approval. The applicant must all five listed criteria and receive no less than four concurrent votes. Review comments. One, that the enforcement of the literal requirements of this ordinance would cause unnecessary hardship. Comment. Current layout of building and parking to accommodate residential use, you're not designed to accommodate residential use. Changing parking to meet our maximum allowed landscaping property and renovating structure to a single family residence would be required to accommodate use granted by right. Two, that special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structures or buildings involved and which are not applicable to other lands, structures or buildings in the same zoning district. Comment. This is the only property zoned transitional mixed use in this portion of the village. Three, that literal interpretation of the provisions would deprive the applicant of property rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. Comment. The previous use of the property was non-conforming and no other properties within the TMU district have been established with a commercial use as the primary use. Four, that the authorization of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent or nearby land, structures or buildings, and will not be contrary to the spirit and purpose of the ordinance. Comment. Transitional mixed use is designed to accommodate development flexibility while buildings are to be in line with traditional village neighborhoods, as seen on page 69 of the master plan, where the proposed use does not intend to alter the exterior of the building. Five, that the special circumstances or conditions referred to in item two do not result from the actions of the applicant. Comment. The layout of the building has been designed for commercial use, limiting the feasibility of utilizing the property as a single family dwelling. So before you, the zoning board of appeals could take one of the following actions. One, they could motion to approve petition as submitted with the staff report and recommendations included for the five, uh, facts and findings found above. Two, motion to approve with facts and findings outside of what was provided in the staff report. However, you know, we would need to know what those comments were, uh, if they were outside of what I had included. And the third will be the motion, uh, to deny the petition if any and all of the five requirements are not met, where you would just need to tell me which one of the requirements it was that wasn't being met, that would not need, uh, comments beyond that. Uh, there are numerous exhibits included within here, uh, that are in or out, in itized, you know, including pictures of the property as well as the notice, uh, the list of the owners that, uh, received notice, the application, the prospective purchase agreement indicating, uh, Ms. Schofield as the prospective, uh, property owner, along with the survey and examples of the sign, uh, to replace the existing sign and floor plans of the property. Does anyone have any questions from me, my, anything I said or anything related to this request?
Are we all familiar with the property?
Yeah.
Okay. In a small town, usually that's what happens. All right. Thank you. All right. Now we will open this up for public comments. We keep our comments about three minutes, uh, and it's just to be, give us the information you want us to hear, whether you're for or against it, problems, whatever. Uh, this is where we need to sort them out and, uh, we include in a civil situation. If there's some comment that you want to come back and make further, uh, we can do it after we've heard everybody else that wanted to speak the first time. So, okay. Is there anybody here who wants to, uh, make a comment? Or opposed? Yes.
Would you mind going up to the podium? Would you mind going up to the podium for us?
And if you could state your name, if you could, sir, if you could state your name for the record.
My name's Brent Hale, 613 Grand Rapids Street. What's up?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I just want to make sure it's just dog grooming or there's no boarding.
And she'll get a chance to come up and speak, if you can address your comments.
Oh, yeah. I just, just wanted to make sure there was gonna be, if there was gonna be any dog boarding at all, you know, like daily or overnight. But there's just strictly dog room.
All right.
Other than that, it's a strictly dog room, have no problems.
All right. And you got a fence between your building and their building, or your house?
I don't. The, the property owners, previous owners got the fence there.
The, the survey indicates.
It's been a long time. It was, it was always a credit union fence, but there's been two different credit unions in there since. I think originally Brent and White put that fence up, I'm not sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come. All right. Any other comments?
I'm Casey Haney. I live on 140 Grand Rapids Street. Um, and I just want to say that I personally take my dogs to Keegan, um, to get them groomed and we are just so thankful for her and hopefully if she does get to move into Middleville, it'll be a little bit more convenient for me, but, um, I think she'll be a great part of the community and I really don't see any, you know, concerns for her to be here. So it'll be good to have her here.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right. Okay. Now we'll go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing and, um, start the regular meeting again. I guess in answer to your question, um, there is not going to be any, um, overnight boarding or any boarding at all. They come, they get cleaned up and clipped up and out they go. Is that what you said on the application? Okay.
It's included in the attachments.
Your hours seem like they're normal, nine to five.
Yeah.
Then I'm taking Saturday morning. Is that, so, okay. All right. No wild parties. Check that out. Okay. So is there any questions from board members?
Um, I did three to four dogs was going to be your maximum at one time.
Yeah, I, well, because there's only the two of us as my coworker here. Um, sometimes people will have multiple dogs from the same family. So I think we've had, I mean, there's one family that has four dogs that come in at once. So I'll have those and work on those and she may have one other. So it's, I think in the building at once is like five absolute maximum. But they are there for two hours and that's it and then they go.
Well, we have three dogs in store and they can make, when one feeds off the other, one barks and the other one wants to one up and get louder. I mean, are you going to be on the side closer to the, the snack shack? To me it was deeds, but anyway, I'm a long time. But, or are you going to be having the animals outside or on the other end of the building? I just would like to know, you know, where that barking might be.
The dogs, I mean, dogs do bark unfortunately. We don't like to listen to it for very long either, so we try to keep it to a minimum, um, as possible, but especially the loud ones, we tell people ahead of time, like, don't leave them here for very long, please. Because they do, they work up all the time. Um, so we try not to let them stay or bark for very long. With the layout, the front door is facing the snack shack. If we're gonna walk in, the reception is right there. We would probably, the dogs want to be outside. I mean, if we could walk into the house, that's it. They want to be outside, they want to be barking. I think the room, the part, the room closest to the house, to the six, the sixteen, is the main area where they would be.
Can you describe?
Yeah, which one?
Give us one second.
That's way down there, isn't it?
It'd be the last one.
Thank you.
Yeah. If I can clarify.
Keep going.
We had a sketch, but I just.
After that.
Yeah, they want to be outside and be, um, be more, I guess, towards the middle of the building.
We gotta be close.
There it is.
There weren't any, um, planned large renovations?
No renovations. No renovations, everything staying on the building as it is, the signs are staying the same as it is. Everything's already kind of set up, how it fits for a nice.
And you're buying the building? Okay. So it takes care of a lot of problems with, uh, you might be there a year and then move on and.
I would hold on. I actually lived in my house, um, at two zero four Grand Rapids for eight years now.
Does, do you work second or third shift?
We're jaring.
Okay. You don't have to sleep during the day?
Well, we are. Yeah, the back of the room is the one problem.
Okay. You don't know if there's anybody else that works second or third shift around there? Parking dogs. All right. Just a question.
During the day. During the day.
I know. I think my neighbor.
I, I think the biggest thing there would be that, um, people are gonna pull up, the dog is gonna be outside from the car right into the building.
Yeah. There's not gonna be.
Muffled. They are a whole while.
There aren't gonna be any more additional car trips than the bank ever produced. So, yeah. Yeah. I'm, I think the use fits the zoning district. It, it is a, the, the parcel and the structure that's already there is, is commercial. I think this use fits. I am, I'm on board.
I was there today and walked around and, um, I can't see that building being used for residents, really. Yeah. Yeah, and it's really odd shaped and half of the property is a parking lot, you know, that type of thing. The only question I have is where that, uh, solid wood fence goes and connects to the corner of the property. If you would be putting up any more fence for exercise area, animals or animals, they have to go outside and do their thing, you know, type of thing.
It would be nice in the future just for safety precautions. But I know that's a whole other zoning thing that we would have to go through and it's not in the near future planning.
It'd be a fence permit. We would just verify the location based on the survey.
Yeah. Other than, I can't say that the building being used.
All right. Any other questions, thoughts? The only one I had was, you said prior, it was, uh, a C one planned unit development, D U D.
That's correct.
What's happened to that?
So the map with that ordinance two zero seven five.
Yeah.
The entire village, they'd adopted a new zoning. When they established those new zoning districts, that's when it became designated as C one and R one, which created the split. Because typically when properties are rezoned through a major zoning map amendment like that, uh, the zoning aligns with the specific parcel. But since this didn't in this case, it would only be the most restrictive of uses that would be permitted. So from, uh, permitted by right use, it would have solely been, uh, single family dwellings. And that was the reason why this was considered along with the other implementation.
The U D just goes away.
It's gone. It's been replaced. The property is on this transitional mixed use.
All right.
Similar to, uh, the Black West of us.
Now the bank has a drive up window. Does it still have a drive up window?
It is still there, but we don't want to use it.
Okay.
It's hard to fit it.
Okay. We're waiting for a motion if there's a matter.
Then I will make a motion that the zoning board of appeals approves, uh, variance request 2024 dash zero one, uh, on including the comments, the review comments from the staff memo on all five standards.
Okay.
I'll second.
Judy seconds that. All right. Is there any discussion? We'll run this back.
Good.
Should I have a motion first? Anyway, um, all right. There's a motion on the floor that we approve, um, this variance, um, for this business, at 611 Grand Rapids Street. And that, um, uh, it includes the review comments. And we will go ahead and vote on it. Let's go roll call vote, if you will.
Sure.
If you're in favor, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay.
Steve Baldry.
Aye.
Jason Holzhousen.
Aye.
Judy Cruz.
Aye.
Kathy Williamson.
Aye.
Eldon Newmeyer.
Aye. Okay. Been approved. Made it through this group of government. Good luck. When will you be opening?
As soon as possible.
Tonight?
We have a reception tomorrow. So we have to at least wait till tomorrow. Hoping, and I'm first of the month, essentially.
Number fast enough for you, that's for sure.
Yeah.
All right. Welcome to Middleville and you do well. Thank you. All right. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate the comments, the attendance, and we'll move on to other matters. Any public comments on matters not on the agenda? All public comments. Okay. Old business, there's none. New business, we have the election of.
I'll see you soon. I, I have a dog to bring in to you. Okay. Welcome.
Good luck. Good luck.
All right.
I have a question on our new business.
Okay, new business.
Do we have to nominate three different times or could we just? That's where I was going with the.
Okay.
Yep. I want to make a motion to retain the, the current structure.
I'll be willing to do it.
Sure.
You can cover.
So I'm just, Rhonda does all the work.
For sure?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a sweat job. Okay, all right. You'd be willing to?
Yeah, Rhonda.
Okay, I'll support Steve's motion then.
All right, we have a motion in the floor that we retain the election, uh, the officers and positions they're in for another year. Okay with that, Judy?
I'm fine with that. I'm an alternate, so I'm, I'm good with all of it.
All those in favor of, uh, the motion on the floor to keep the officers we have in the places they are, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. All right. So that passes. Boy, that was fast. Now, do we have any Z B A member comments?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Gonna do something to irritate you guys.
With, with the Z B A not having terribly difficult business is a good thing.
Yes.
I would just like to make one comment. I really appreciate getting the information as early as it comes. Because then I can take some free time and I sit at my computer, go through it and I'll visit the property and that type of stuff. I appreciate that.
Yes. I also want to thank Rhonda again, I did it previously, uh, on the, well, I guess it's Kim. Of the way that she did the, uh, notice, uh, for the public. Um, it happened to me once. I come out of the, the coffee shop and a guy that I knew came up and says, what's this all about? I, first time I ever saw it, didn't know anything about it, what was coming up before. And all I had on there was the property, um, uh, number, okay? And it was nothing about what it was all about or anything. And I said, I'll get back to you.
That goes all the way back to Brian.
And I also like.
Well, I came down and got.
We were just saying thanks for all this information you've given us. And I feel we can make a good decision rather than hoping we made a good decision. It's nice seeing the business come to.
Did not adjourn yet.
I move we adjourn.
Support.
All right, there's a motion on the floor that we adjourn. If you're in favor of this, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed and you're left here, say nay. All right, we are over.
July eighteenth is.
Has anyone been by the house on Grand Rapids Street where they just carry each house that we get from the ferry gets off?